Okay, we'll get started. Thank you all very much for being here. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code as amended in order meeting the Board of Trustees of the Austin and Pitt School District for Monday, March 26, 2012 at 7:08, or 7:09, sorry, PM. Board meeting in closed session deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties dispened or dismissed of a public officer or employee, deliberation of purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, deliberation of negotiated contract or prospective gifts to the district, deliberation about commercial or financial information the board has received from a business prospect, or deliberation of the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect in her consult with legal counsel regarding contemplated or pending litigation, or an settlement offer on another matter which the school district legal counsel determined should be confidential in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.077, 551.073, and 551.071, respectively. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Sir, second. Second, Ms. Bristor. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, all approved. Thank you very much. Let y'all know, I did hear from Mr. Torres. He is not able to join us this evening. He had a, someone passed away in his family, and he's got a rosary out of town this evening. So, he will miss the meeting, but we apologize and wish our sympathies to him and his families. Okay, let us turn to the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, Baldwin. Come on up. Y'all blend into those chairs. I almost weren't sure you were there. I saw some heads on top of the chairs. I didn't even see the bodies. I'm just kidding. Okay, so, welcome. So, somebody's in charge, and they're gonna tell us what to do. What would you suggest? People are already adhering to your guidance before you've even said a word. Look how powerful you are. Men will tell us that. Look behind you. You are powerful beyond words. What would you like us up here to do?
Please rise for the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please let us know who these wonderful students are.
I will. I'm very, very proud of our fifth graders that have joined us here this evening. So, Dr. Karstarfin, President Williams, and the rest of the school board members with us this evening. We have three student council officers. Our president, Austin Killte, our vice president, Miguel Casas Padron, and our treasurer, Jacob Hively. And the others are our fifth grade leaders that are part of either other organizations or clubs that we have on the campus, as well as our safety patrol members. Mariah Smith, Cade Nowicki, Ryan Nowicki, Elizabeth Teet, Lauren Crouppens, and Ingrid Lopez. Also with us this evening is Mrs. Hively. She is, Kelly Hively is one of our teachers at Baldwin, but she is also the student council sponsor. And so, she has helped organize it. It's our first year to have student council. I'm very proud of the students. And with us, we also have parents who joined us tonight, and some of our siblings, or the student siblings that have come this evening. Thank you for having us this evening. We're very proud.
And you are, Ms. Penya.
And I am Rosa Penya, the principal of Baldwin Elementary.
Proud principal of this school. And with the two, with Kate and Ryan, were y'all surprised when you got to school and found out there was another kid with the same last name as you? How shocking was that? Okay, so, congratulations. Great. I think we have a little something for you. Why don't you, why don't we come up forward, and we'll meet you? (Applause) (Music) 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 Okay, Ms. Penya did recognize, but we, the parents and the other staff members that others, that are here supporting these kids, thank you all very much for all of you do every single day.[460.22][460.22](Applause) We have an incredible faculty down there, but we know, as we say, the parents are the first teachers. So, thank you very much for all you do. Students, we'd say y'all are welcome to stay, but as you're already getting up and running out the door, we don't want to keep you. So, thank you all very much. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we don't want to keep you. So, we'll get you out of here. Thank you all very much.[484.61][484.61](Applause) And good luck the rest of the semester and in middle school.[491.21][491.21](Applause) Okay, let's get to some other, a little slightly older students. Y'all were the model for them. You may not have appreciated those young elementary school students were looking at you as their role models. I don't know if they were or not, but it sounded, sounded like something to say. Okay, Mr. Lopez.[517.12][517.12](Laughter) I just want you all to be thinking about yourself as role models at all times for all the young people. What you got?
Yes, sir. President Williams, members of the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Karstarfin. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce to you this year's National Merit Scholars. Students and campus administrators, would you please stand as I call your name, then please return to your seats as we introduce the next school and students. We're gonna start off with Aikens High School. Principal Daniel Gerard, National Hispanic Recognition Program, Julen Rivetta. Mr. Gerard and Mr., and Julen Rivetta could not be in attendance today due to a prior commitment. We wanted, but we wanted to recognize their names tonight. Anderson High School, Principal Donna Hauser, National Merit Scholarship finalist, Kevin Bishop, Tiffany Chan, Sarah Clement, Derek Cornelius, Victoria Crank, Brett Leatherwood, Elizabeth McLean, Nadia Stouffle, Katie Young.
Can we give them a round of applause? Is that all the Andersons?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.[581.91][581.91](Applause)
Thank you. Austin High School, Principal Dr. Lucio Calzada, National Merit Scholarship finalist, Elizabeth Bueller, Nathaniel Frutier, National Merit semifinalists, Kevin Wang, National Hispanic Recognition Program, Caitlin Alcantara, Christopher Baichek, Carlos Cruz, Alejandro Gutierrez, Catalina Lizaraga, Zachary Martinez, Blanca Zemeron Torres. Bowie High School, Principal Stephen Kane, National Merit Scholarship finalists, Hannah Hill, Thomas Kim, National Merit finalist, Juon Lee, National Hispanic Recognition Program, Raven Alonso, Brooke Evans, Carl Heiser, Jade Lou Wright, Haley Lopez, Carol Pimentel, Camelia Ramirez Arro, Lisa Sinical, and Madison Tomacak, National Achievement Scholarship finalists, Tara Mayberry.
Okay, congratulations to Bowie.[672.57][672.57](Applause)
Lassa High School, Principal Stacia Krezense, National Merit Scholarship finalists, Carly Banner, Casey Correns, Hannah Dornhofer, Sean Doyle, Gina Faldetta, David Freed, Bradley Giridoh, Kelsey Hicks, Tyler Jones, Kelvin Ling, Callie Meyer, Richard Persall, Samuel Porter, Kyra Prentice, Wallace Robinson, Mark Sands, Sam Trejo, Christopher Wang, and Sheng Go Wang, National Merit semifinalists, Xavier Dennis, National Hispanic Recognition Program, Ruben Atkins, Casey Correns, Cecilia Foot, David Freed, Natalie Gerardo, Sarah Coons, Cesad Salgado, Ruth Sanchez, Ismael Sobek, Sam Trejo, Cristabella Trimble Quiz, Marissa Wasmouth, Leonardo Zornberg Berg, National Achievement Scholarship finalists, Jaren Mackey and Annel Paige. Lassa High School. McCallum High School, Principal Mike Garrison, National Merit semifinalists, Paul Minay, Minye, National Hispanic Recognition Program, Zachary Aguilar, Nicholas Botero, Kyle Duncan, Sarah Garza, Melena Viegas, National Achievement Scholarship finalists, Maketa Robinson. McCallum High School.[806.01][806.01](Applause)
Congratulations to McCallum.[810.01][810.01](Applause)
Mr. Williams.
Ms. Barstow.
Yeah. Tonight, on behalf of the AISD Board of Trustees, I am proud to recognize the 76 students who have been named finalist, semifinalist, Hispanic Scholar, and National Achievement Scholars in the National Merit Scholarship Program. This is one of the most distinguished honors a high school student can achieve, one that reflects outstanding accomplishment as a student and as a scholar. National Merit finalists and semifinalists are selected based on many criteria, in addition to test scores, including volunteer participation, teacher recommendations, and high school grades, and the rigor of courses taken, among other qualifications. For the 15,000 finalists in the nation, there will be about 8,200 merit awards. About 2,500 finalists receive a $2,500 National Merit Scholarship for use at the college of their choice in the United States. Each year, nearly 5,000 outstanding Hispanic students in the nation are named National Hispanic Scholars. Outstanding African-American high school students throughout the country are recognized as National Achievement Scholars. Tonight, the Board of Trustees is honoring 32 National Merit finalists, four semifinalists, 35 National Hispanic Scholars, and four National Achievement Scholars. We commend and congratulate these students, their families, and their teachers for this honor. Every student being recognized this evening shows bright promise, and we wish each of you the best in your future endeavors during college and in the career of your choosing. We are confident that your high school achievements have prepared you well for the challenges ahead, and that you will continue to be successful. So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Ms. Moya. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passionate answer, please. Congratulations. Please come on forward. Let us shake your hands.[944.13][944.13](Applause)
Congratulations. Good job.[947.13][947.13](Laughter) I don't want to miss that. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. When are you guys going? Nice. Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Hey, how you doing? Good to see you. Hey, you're going to school? Yeah. College? You're a junior. Yeah, you're a junior. Okay. And it's March. I lost track of time. Okay. So, you guys find out when April 1? What's it? She was telling me when it was.
We probably should have done it, I know there were some family members and parents with all those kids, whether they're here or not, let's just recognize them, give them a big round of applause for supporting those kids. And to the faculty and the staffs at the various schools, and we wish them the best of luck. Their college choices were just amazing. Okay, thank you all for your patience and indulgence on that, but it's always fun to recognize student performance, and especially when these kids have performed as well as those group of kids have. So this is the time we'll move to citizens communication. We dedicate at each regularly scheduled board meeting, time for public comments. Under the open means law and the rules of this board, there will not be a dialogue between the persons at the microphone and the dais, but we'll be taking notes in order to provide as many opportunities as possible for people to speak within a limited time period. We will ask that each speaker be allotted two minutes. As you come to the microphone, there's a device that will light up as you move through your two minutes of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please take the opportunity to sum up your comments so we can move on to the next person. And each person who signed up will have the opportunity to address the board. We ask that when you come to give complaint or praise, that you reference a staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. For example, Mr. D or Mrs. A unless you're addressing the superintendent of schools or the board, and then feel free to address us directly. The district is a local governmental body charged with serving the educational needs of all students, and board meetings must be focused on that charge. All regular board meetings are televised and rebroadcast on AISD cable channel 20 and over the AISD website. And we ask that audience members, whether speaking or not, please respect all others at all times. And the communications services department provides a Spanish language translator for audience members who need assistance understanding comments, or trustees, comments made to trustees or the trustees themselves during citizen communication. If you need this service during other portions of the meeting, please speak with the interpreter. And Ruby Azar Shea, communications specialist, welcome, we'll repeat this message in Spanish.
Buenas noches Mesa Directiva, Presidente Williams, Doctora Carstorfen. Mi nombre es Ruby Azar Shea, soy intérprete del distrito y estoy aquí para ofrecer mis servicios de interpretación al español a las personas que lo necesiten. Gracias.
That's great, welcome, thank you. Okay, thank you all for being here, my apologies if I mispronounce your names, please fix me up if I mess it up, which is highly likely, at least for some. I'm calling groups of three, Denise Graham, Steve Swanson, and Megan Buchanan.
Good evening. Tonight I'm here to support naming the new early childhood center in South Austin for Anita Uphouse. Anita was the director of early childhood programs here in Austin AISD for many years. She was a truly hands-on advocate for pre-K teachers and pre-K students alike. She held the vision to create and to mold the AISD early childhood program into the world-renowned program that has become today. I had the honor and privilege of working with Anita for 19 years at Travis Heights Elementary and at Palm Elementary. Anita recognized the importance of starting early with our most at-risk students. In fact, she realized that prevention is much easier and more cost-effective than intervention. Anita Uphouse has impacted the lives of young children everywhere. She's also impacted the lives of her teachers. After 32 years in AISD and upon her retirement, she remains active in the community and continues to advocate for young students by speaking at TEA hearings and to legislators about early childhood issues. She had a direct influence on the writing of the pre-K guidelines, the standards used statewide. She is the essence of what it means to be a lifetime teacher. I can think of no other person who more deserves to have the newest AISD early childhood center named after her. Her quiet contributions to AISD are many. I hope you will consider naming an early childhood center after Austin's early childhood educator. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Steve Swanson, Megan Buchanan, and Rachel McGee.
I must start by saying I had a great experience at the Pride Festival last Saturday at Eastside Memorial High School at Johnston Campus. Good evening, my name is Steve Swanson, I'm here tonight as a participant in the city-county, school-district joint subcommittee's work connecting the dots. A member of the Planning and Decision Making Committee, CAC, for Eastside Memorial at Johnston. And part of a group of students, educators, and business executives who volunteer in a statewide effort focused on communities connecting for youth. The group's information is being shared with administrators, board members, and legislators statewide. It communicates the importance of community involvement in a systemic approach to student success, which is provided for in the text education code and supported by many. It includes the unique leadership opportunity and responsibility of school board members to connect their community. An intermediary structure, our joint subcommittee, is a model. And facilitated processes for collaborative, community-based planning of services for youth and our schools. Collaborative planning does save money, time, and most importantly, lives. The group is also collecting stories like the Pride Festival and the joint subcommittee to share statewide for the purpose of communities learning from one another. We look forward to answering your questions and hearing your thoughts and stories. In 2008, I began working with people at Eastside Memorial at Johnston. In four years, I've worked with five principals. It is urgent and critical that we stabilize the learning experience of our youth and improve our school planning process. Be encouraged to connect and include our students. They teach me what is real and inspire me to continue. Again, great to see so many people, including students, board members, and the superintendent, at the Pride Festival last Saturday, connecting and working together for the success of our students. A story we all look forward to sharing, thank you.
Thank you. Megan Buchanan, Rachel McGee, and Chaval Lopez. Rachel, is that you? Megan, do you want to go first? Rachel, do you have a sequence? Megan? Okay, Rachel, go ahead, we'll get Megan after that.
Okay, sure. Hello, I'm here this evening as an AISD parent, a taxpayer, and...
Ms. McGee, could you pull that microphone down just a little bit there? Thank you.
There we go, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
So I'm here as an AISD parent, a taxpayer, and as a member of the Coalition to strengthen Austin urban schools. A parent-led coalition that came together in an effort to slow down and remedy the district's flawed process for making facilities use decisions. We've been expressing our concern about the process to the board since January 2011 in various forms, and I'm here again tonight to repeat because we do not appear to be heard that the Coalition source formally requests once again that AISD establish and utilize an authentic, transparent, participatory, community-based process with a reasonable timeframe for decision-making about facility use such as closing a school or repurposing a campus. Voting on the IDEA charter school in three to four weeks is not a reflection of what we're asking for. Talking of the IDEA school that was approved by AISD to co-locate on Allen Elementary campus, if it wasn't clear enough at that time back in December how unpopular that was with many of the Allen Elementary stakeholders, it surely should be apparent now with the enrollment not meeting the pre-grade level enrollment requirements that was set in the contract. That those contract minimum enrollments, AISD has extended the deadline for IDEA to be able to meet those minimum enrollment numbers. It's passed twice, now you're considering a third extension. How many extensions will AISD give to IDEA to meet the terms of its contract? How much time, energy, and district resources has AISD committed to assist IDEA in meeting the terms of their contract with the district? Is this fair to taxpayers? Does this meet the standard of due diligence and good stewardship of public funding? Myself, I do not, it does not sit well with me to use public money to be managed by a private entity, especially when many charter schools are failing in Texas and have been proven not to be any more successful than our public schools. Before I leave, I just would like to conclude by telling you that Coalition Source would also like to ask the board to join with 40 other districts in Texas that have approved a resolution for the Texas Legislature to reconsider high-stakes testing.
Please wrap up, thank you. Hello, there, Megan Buchanan, Chaval Lopez, and Luke Mesquith.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Carstorfen. I'm here for my monthly good news report from the Eastside Memorial vertical team. This Saturday, ESET had a small but strong team compete at Academic UIL. Our senior Haley Libby placed first in the literary criticism event and will be competing in regionals in April 21st. Haley and a student from Lhasa had to go to a tiebreaker and Haley ended up winning based on her essay. Sofia Bui also made first alternate by placing fourth at the event. Another senior Andrea Rojas was awarded an Austin Voices Stand-Up-for-your-school scholarship last week for her dedication to ESET and her community engagement. Our journalism student Fabian Vasquez, sorry, wrote a news article on carbon monoxide leaks in Austin, which made the national edition of the high school journalism. On March 6th, the Martin Middle School Symphonic Band earned outstanding ratings at UIL Concert and Sight Reading. On a scale of one to five, one being superior. The Eagle Band got a two in the concert portion and a two in sight reading. Our EMHS band director collaborates with Martin Band teachers on a regular basis, and most of the Martin Band students have said they plan on coming to Eastside next year. Kudos to our future Panthers for a job well done. Our vertical team is lucky to have Kevin Isaacs and Jimmy Spencer as their teachers, and we are extremely grateful for their dedication and hard work with our students. Eastside Band goes to UIL on April 11th, and Choir will compete on April 18th, so wish us luck. Martin also has 60 students who have signed up for Choir for next year. They don't currently offer Choir, but we're adding it next year. And this amount of interest shows that our efforts in vertical alignment and collaboration have been working. Our robotics team is also getting ready for their big competition in Houston, April 3rd through 5th. We can't wait to hear the results. Go Valley Elementary is on its fourth year of socio-emotional learning and is getting great results. They also have one of, I think maybe one of the only dads' clubs, and they went to an Austin Torres game, Toros game, altogether and had a great time. Two of our basketball players Pablo Govera and Sharad Jackson both earned second all-district selections this year, and our soccer team ended their season with two big wins. Our students came tonight to sign up to speak but arrived at 7:02, and as we walked in the door, the sign was being taken down for citizens communication. There are only 12 speakers signed up, and I ask that you please allow for just one of them to take the 13th spot. They want to go, they won't go over their time, and they promised to say only nice things. I just want you to consider that.
Okay, let us think about it as the board, I mean, we typically don't allow 7 o'clock, and it's a problem. It's about precedent for other things that may not be even today, and we would love to hear from them, obviously. The sign up normally is 7 o'clock.
Their plan was to report on the Panther Pride Fest briefly, so if you won't allow them, I wonder if you'd give me 20 seconds to sum that up?
Yeah, if it's possible, and you can get to the board secretary and just send us an email, get us the information. They can call our voicemails, they can happy to do that. Now, my apologies, team, thank you all for being here.
Okay, they brought a little goodie for you.
Yeah, please, please, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, Luke Mesquith, and Martha Pelgato.
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, and superintendent. My name is Chavel Lopez, and I'm here as a representative and organizer for the Southwest Public Workers Union, which represents custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, bus monitors, maintenance workers, and paraprofessionals here in the Austin Independent School District. And the reason that we're here tonight is because we're protesting the proposed 3% pay increase for all employees for the 2012-2013 school year. We feel that, you know, the auxiliary workers, when it comes to wages, are at the bottom of the totem pole. We also, you know, our members are fired up because of the fact that they have not received a pay raise in two years. And even though, you know, like, we have other employees, like teachers, who get an automatic step increase, and we have principals and teachers also that can apply for the REACH program if they meet certain goals, they get a, they get a good bonus. Also, we have, you know, our superintendent who makes a hefty salary of over $283,000 a year. Plus, she also gets, you know, a $12,000 car allowance, automobile allowance, plus a $15,000 annuity contribution. And she qualifies for a $25,000 bonus every year, you know. We understand, you know, she got a bonus of $41,000 two years ago, even though none of the employees, you know, got a pay raise. I'm sure that if she would have refused, that she would have been a more popular superintendent than she is today. But we feel that the 3% pay raise is unfair because, you know, we have a cafeteria worker who earns $10,000 a year. She'll get only $300 more per year than versus, for example, a high school principal who earns $110,000 a year. a high school principal who earns $110,000 a year. He'll be getting $3,300 more per year, so we feel that that is not fair, and we're asking for a 6% across-the-board pay raise for all auxiliary workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Luke Meskwitz, Martha Delgado, and Anthony Ortiz Jr.
Dr. Karstarfen, trustees, good evening. My name is Luke Meskevich, Eastside resident and father of a Metz Elementary 3rd grader. Since your last general meeting in February, the extended deadline for parents to opt out of IDEA Allen has passed. As of March 9th, you reported 67 students enrolled in K-2nd grade at IDEA Allen, which is to say, three out of every five K-2 families opted out of IDEA Allen, with most of those children enrolling at Go Valley and Ortega. As it stood, IDEA had just under 20% of the minimum number of K-2nd students specified in the contract. You also reported 77 students enrolled in 6th grade at IDEA Allen. While that's 2/3 of the students specified in the contract, it's critical to note that over 70% of the students assigned to attend 6th grade at IDEA Allen by default. Over 200 5th graders at seven schools opted out, with more students choosing Martin Middle School over IDEA Allen. As one who's argued IDEA Allen isn't the right solution for families within the Eastside Memorial Vertical Team, I have to say, I'm shocked by these numbers. With all that AISD and IDEA have put into this effort, still, the vast majority of kinder, 1st, 2nd, and 6th grade parents decided IDEA wasn't right for their children. The silent majority has in fact spoken. Nevertheless, AISD's March 9th press release suggests these enrollment levels are both perfectly acceptable and according to plan. Over the past two weeks, IDEA has ramped up advertising, eagerly trying to recruit children at the other elementary schools within the EMVT. But if these March 9th numbers are any indication, these parents won't be any more excited about IDEA. I think you have to ask whether you're justified in replacing two Eastside schools with charter schools that most affected Eastside parents do not want. So I must ask that you reconsider. Put IDEA on your agenda for your April board meeting and vote to cut our losses before it's too late. Thank you.
Martha Delgado, Anthony Ortiz, and Mike Corwin. Welcome.
Thank you. Buenas noches. Señor Presidente Williams y su mesa directiva. Nuestra superintendente, la señora Merian. Soy Martha Delgado. Trabajo en el departamento de transportación. Tengo 19 años de servicio en la base del sur.
Good evening, President Williams, School Board, and Dr. Karstarfen. I am Martha Delgado. I have been working for the district for 19 years at the, for the transportation department in that base in the south.
Especial education. Vengo a darles a saber mi situación personal.
I'm here to speak to you about my personal situation.
Mi preocupación por el alza de los precios que está entre más más para arriba.
I'm worried about the prices, about how all the prices of things are going up more and more.
En nuestro trabajo estamos muchas personas tristes por el aumento que se supone que nos van a dar.
A lot of my coworkers are very sad because of the supposed raise that we're getting.
Porque nosotros somos de nueve meses.
Because we're, our contract is for nine months.
Se termina el año escolar.
The school year ends.
Y nos quedamos sin trabajo.
And we're basically out of a job.
Se oyen rumores de que se va a dar horas para el summer schools.
We have heard rumors that there will be hours given during summer school.
Ojalá, y nos tocará algo, pero ustedes creen que con eso nos vamos a mantener.
Hopefully, we will get some of those hours, but do you think that will be enough for us to support ourselves?
Estamos sumamente preocupados porque, como les vuelvo a repetir, todos necesitamos nuestro trabajo.
We're very worried because, and let me repeat myself here, we really need our jobs.
Entonces, yo vengo a suplicarles a usted, doctora, en especial por nuestra superintendenta, de que se nos tome en cuenta o de que se nos reubique en el tiempo del summer schools dentro del área del distrito escolar para poder sacar un poco más de horas para nuestros... ¿No sabéis?
So, I am here to ask you respectfully, and especially you, Dr. Karstarfen, if you will take us into consideration and relocate us within the district so we can get a few more hours of work during the summer so we can sustain ourselves.
Yo trabajo en la base del sur, soy feliz con mis niños, los amo, les doy todo mi cariño, y cada año aprendo de ellos. Gracias por su atención y espero nos tomen en consideración este detalle que vengo a darles a saber. Muchas gracias. Que tengan buenas noches y que Dios los bendiga.
I work at the southern base. I love the children, I love my job, and I am just here to give you my thoughts about this and hopefully ask you to take them into consideration. Good night and God bless.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Delgado. Anthony Ortiz Jr., Mike Corwin, and Amanda Austin.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Anthony Ortiz. I am, I graduated in 2011 from Austin High. I went to Martin Middle School, and I went to Allison Elementary. And I am speaking as an Eastside resident, a musician, and as well as a brother. Last Saturday, I had the privilege, me and my family, were invited to perform for Eastside Memorial's Panther Pride Festival. I play in a mariachi band called Mariachi Corvettes with my father and my grandfather, and we went there and we supported the Eastside community and performed. Oh, and I forgot to introduce this to my sister. She is Samantha Ortiz. She goes to Eastside Memorial. She's a junior now, and she's the dance captain. I came up here just to talk about how awesome the festival really was. I mean, I was very surprised. It was real nice, had a lot of activities, a lot of stuff going on, and I was proud to, you know, help out and perform there. It was real fun. I was also asked to talk about my father, who went to Johnston High School back years ago, and my grandfather as well, who had a band back in the 60s called Shorty and the Corvettes, who would go and perform at all the Eastside schools and everywhere all over Eastside and all over town, and he talked about performing there and all his memories, and it was real nice. Well, I, like I said, I went to Martin and I went to Allison, and I was hearing as Ms. Buchanan was talking, and heard her talk very high about these schools, you know, about Martin getting straight ones and sight reading and everything. And I remember back when I was at Martin, and we had good ratings, but we weren't as good as the kids are now. So as a former Martin Middle School student, it makes me feel so good to hear that the students there are doing so much better than what we were doing. So, you know, I want to congratulate them on that. And for the most part, it was fun. The festival was fun. It was nice seeing a lot of people there. And I want to give a shout out to the kids, the Eastside students who came to support their school, and Ms. Buchanan for inviting me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mike Corwin, Amanda Austin, and Cheryl Prater.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Mike Corwin. I'm a parent of a kindergartner in AISD school, and I'm here tonight to talk to, speak to the issue of standardized testing. As you, I'm sure you know, today marks the debut of the STAR test amid huge controversy that's whirling across the state. And, you know, I think what we found, what we're finding is that we're really at a tipping point with this debate, with, I think, so much overreach in terms of state mandates and state policy and so forth, that you've now had this huge debate about STAR. And what I think, if you talk to any parent, educator, you know, educator, student, and now you have school administrators speaking out all across the state, saying that we have gone way too far, we're spending, what is it, 45 days out of the school year preparing for benchmarks, drilling, and the whole thing for the test. And I think there's a broad consensus that has come together to say we have overstepped on this issue and it has actually been deleterious to our kids' education. It's actually hurting our kids' love of learning and our ability to sort of teach real skills. And so I think we're at a real tipping point with this debate. What I, what I here to kind of ask you to consider is there's a resolution, one of the speakers earlier alluded to it. As of last week, some 40 districts across the state had signed on to, I understand it's upwards of 160, school boards have now adopted this resolution. We have copies of it, we can provide it to you. It's been passed on districts upwards of 160, including, I believe Fort Worth is considering it, Northridge ISD, which is a huge district in the San Antonio area. And it basically lays out some arguments about why standardized testing has gone too far, and basically just calls on the state legislature to make a change in the spring. We know that our education commissioner and y'all made the choice to defer some of the more, I think, controversial aspects of STAR until next year. All that is coming back in a year's time, and, you know, we need some serious change now. So I guess I'm out of time, but I just want to say, this is a great opportunity. There's tremendous political space right now with school boards and administrators speaking out, including Jenny Caputo, I hope I'm saying that right, the head of TASA, coming out and saying, this is a great time for school administrators to take a stand and actually insert ourselves into this discussion. So please consider doing it. We'll provide you a copy of the resolution, and we would love to speak to members of the board about this further. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Amanda Austin, Cheryl Prater, and Cindy Behringer.
I'll wait until everyone gets one, I guess. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Edie because she wasn't able to get here in time to sign up.
On behalf of who?
Edie Chamnis.
Okay, so you're Amanda?
Yes, I'm Amanda.
Thank you.
I'm going to wait for everyone to get one so they can kind of look at it while we're talking.
I think we're short a copy.
Okay. Oh, okay. We have more back there. Maybe Mike can bring one up.
One more coming.
Oh, there we go. Thanks.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Austin.
Mm-hmm. My name is Edie Chamnis, and I am the mother of two kids that attend Austin Public Schools. I am a Texas-certified teacher and also the director of the Texas Chapter of the United Opt-Out Movement. We are a group of parents, educators, students, and social activists who are dedicated to the elimination of high-stakes testing in public education. I stand before the board today and request that Austin ISD join the 160 districts across Texas who have already adopted the Resolution Concerning High-Stakes Standardized Testing of the Texas Public School Students. More than two months ago, Commissioner of Education, Robert Scott, openly declared on two separate occasions that the current system of Texas has become a perversion of its original intent. I witnessed this perversion firsthand when my son entered 3rd grade last year. I immediately saw a negative change in my son. His joy and enthusiasm for learning was gone, replaced by anxiety and chronic stomach aches. After observing his classroom in the 3rd week of school, it became immediately obvious to me that standardized testing had degraded his educational experience, to the point that his classroom was nothing more than a worksheet distribution center. There were no intriguing units of study, nor was there any support of enrichment of any kind. Rather than great literature, students were constantly assigned boring and mundane reading passages followed by mind-numbing questions of no interest and importance. We transferred our son to another nearby school, hoping it would be different. Unfortunately, it has been too deeply contaminated by standardized testing as well. The mission of Austin ISD is, in partnership with parents in our community, AISD exists to provide a comprehensive educational experience that is high-quality, challenging, and inspires all students to make a positive contribution to society. We will never be able to fulfill this mission as long as teachers are forced to teach to the tests and test scores are continued to be the focal point of student achievement. Board, please show that you care about our children and sign your name and make a commitment to end this destructive system of high-stakes testing that is destroying our Texas public schools. And for anyone in the audience that would wish to sign, we are collecting signatures in support of AISD hopefully approving this proposal. So we'll have clipboards back there for anyone that's interested.
Okay, thank you very much. Cheryl Prater and Cindy Behringer.
Good evening, Dr. Karstarfen, President Williams, and board members. Thank you for your service to the AISD children. I'm honored to address you this evening in regard to naming the new Early Childhood Center that will serve the Lender community after Anita Uphouse. I am a former pre-K teacher having been mentored by Anita Uphouse. I now work with the ACE tutoring program that has placed some of our tutors at Lender Elementary for the past three years. As I read Anita's letters of support on the AISD website, I was so pleased to read the letter of support from the Lender Campus Advisory Council in regard to naming the new center after Anita Uphouse. I join with the Lender community that is dear to my heart and the heart of ACE in proclaiming this. What a lovely idea to name the new center after such a well-loved and respected early childhood educator, Anita Uphouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Behringer.
Yeah, I'm Cindy Behringer, and I am a taxpayer, a parent, a grandparent, and an educator. And I'm here also to urge you to take the really bold step in considering the resolution to reconsider high-stakes testing. High-stakes testing is universally hated by everyone, teachers, students, parents, everyone except the few who profit off of them, the corporations, the testing corporations, and the lobbyists and the politicians who take whatever they can get from the lobbyists. I think that, you know, the other day in the Austin American Statesman Saturday, there was an article about tax tummy and what you could do to try to overcome tax tummy, which is now, as of today, became STAR tummy. These are the upset stomachs and the extreme pressure that's put on kids that are having to take these tests. Kids that throw up, wet their pants, do many other things to express their extreme frustration in the early grades. And the kids in high school express their frustrations in many other ways, and none of them very pretty. I don't think that any student's lives should be determined, their futures, by high-stakes testing. But the worst thing about high-stakes testing, in my opinion, is the mind-numbing boredom of them. It's boring to teach, it's incredibly boring to administer a test, and it's incredibly boring to the students who have to do the mindless worksheets, the bubbling, the constant preparation for the tests. I have a granddaughter who's entering kindergarten next year, and she's thrilled with the idea of learning. She likes to know why the stars come up at night, why Monday is followed by Tuesday, constantly learning and loves learning. And I'm terrified at the thought of her entering kindergarten, getting up to the 3rd grade, and having to be taught a test and be completely, have the joy of learning completely killed for her. This shouldn't happen. These are our schools, they belong to us, we should have what we want. And you should listen to the ideas of the people who want this testing ended and not just ram it through like you did with the IDEA schools. Thank you.
Okay, appreciate y'all being here this evening. And we will now move on to the consent agenda. And just, the board members, we're, with respect to the consent agenda, a couple things, one of which, the item itself, there's an item for a separate vote, and that's usually with respect to Mr. Torres, but because he's out attending the service this evening, we are able to take the entire consent agenda. And then I also want to point out that on a consent agenda, item 13-9, which is our contract renewals, you'll see a long list of people in the renewal process. And I think, as y'all know, we renew contracts, but then over the course of the year, we actually will get employees who will tell us that somewhere between now and when the school year's over, that they're choosing not to exercise that renewal, but this is our extension of the renewal. At this point, we, the administration has already removed 12 names, which begin on page 40, the contract renewals. We already have 12 employees on the list tonight that have extended or submitted their intent to resign and won't be returning to the district. So while approving this action tonight, we're approving the extension for all the people that have on the list, except the 12, which the administration will have already pulled off the list, and just know that there will be people on this list that, over time, will choose not to exercise the renewal. And that's just the way it normally is, but just want to make sure everybody understands that this is our extension of them, of the renewal, but not necessarily their acceptance of the renewal. Okay, so with that, I will open up for a motion to, with respect to the consent agenda. Ms. Moya.
Move approval of consent agenda items 10 through 14.
Okay, is there a second? Second, Mr. Snyder. Discussion. Home favorite motion, please raise your right hand. Passion has me, thank you, board. Okay, now let us move to, we have two items on the agenda tonight that are, the first one is the naming of the... one is the naming of the Early Childhood Center. We did have a couple of people that spoke about that. Just to remind the board, we did have a process over the last several months, many months, where we collected nominations, looked at our policy, had a process by which we, and we discussed the process by which we named schools. And we got many worthy nominations from the public. The board discussed the process and the candidates over time and at board meetings and work sessions. And this was, it's always a difficult decision to name any school because we have very worthy nominees. But in the discussion that we came up with tonight and at our last meeting, it was trying to find the best fit of a nominee and a facility, including the programmatic considerations of that facility. And as has been mentioned, you know, we're nominating, we're naming for a new early childhood center. And so we did, we were able to kind of narrow down on that particular program and this facility. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Guzman.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I move that the Board of Trustees name the new Early Childhood Center located at 5200 Frederick Lane in East Austin in honor of Ms. Anita Uphouse. And that the specific name of the new facility be Anita House Early Childhood Center. Anita Uphouse retired from AISD in 2006 after 32 years of continuous service. Ms. Uphouse started her career in Austin as a kindergarten teacher in both Graham-Cook Elementary Schools. Later, she served the district as a curriculum coordinator, early childhood administrator, and facilities administrative supervisor. As a supervisor of early childhood programs between 1981 and 2006, she led the process of managing and development and growth of the district's pre-K and kindergarten programs. Anita was a key administrator in fostering collaborative, collaboration between AISD and other local state agencies. In the mid-'80s, she worked directly with leadership from the local Head Start and workforce to develop a model program of combined services to serve young children and their families. The success of that initiative was a prominent influence in forming the legislation that created the state's funded pre-kindergarten program. Later, Austin was chosen to be one of 10 cities across the state to pilot the Texas early education model, the forerunner of the current Texas School Ready Project. Ms. Uphouse served on the City of Austin Childcare Council and was on the Leadership Committee of the local Success by Six, a national United Way initiative to provide early childhood care for services to Austin families. From 2003 to 2005, she completed two terms as president of the Texas Association of Administrators and Supervisors of Programs for Young Children. And she served on the TEA authorship team to write the 2003 pre-kindergarten guidelines for the state of Texas. She is a contributing author of the recent published Benson Handwriting for Kindergarten, and she continues to conduct professional development seminars across the country. Given that the Early Childhood Center will serve, will also serve as a demonstration school for pre-K and K teachers across the district, it is most fitting to name the center in honor of someone who has dedicated a career to early childhood education, who can serve as an inspiration, role model for others who will follow in her footsteps. Therefore, I repeat my motion that the Early Childhood Center be named Anita Uphouse Early Childhood Center. So move.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Ms. Moya.
Second.
Okay, discussion board members. Okay, all in favor of that motion, please? Yes, Mr. Snyder?
I have one thing.
Please.
In a prior life, I was parent co-chair of the DAC, the District Advisory Committee, and one of the first things I remember in serving on that committee was in working with Anita on pre-K issues, early childhood issues, and she's probably one of the ones that got me most interested in supporting pre-K in the district, which I strongly do. So I not only agree with this, I think it's a great idea, named after a person that's more than deserving for this particular honor, and I'm thrilled to see this happening for this school.
That's great, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Passion and answer, please. Congratulations, Ms. Anita Uphouse Early Childhood Center. And we thank all of you for being here this evening. Do we know where Ms. Uphouse might be? We wanted, somehow, hopefully somebody will give her our greatest appreciation. Big hugs all around. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, board, let us now turn to the next item on the agenda, which is the superintendent's report. We have 30 minutes identified for this item.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, this agenda item is regarding the superintendent's recommendation to the board regarding the creation of a Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. As part of the Facility Master Plan Framework that the board approved in November of 2011, the Capital Improvement and Bond Planning Advisory Committee, or the CIP PAC, was created as an ad hoc advisory body of the district reporting to the superintendent. Under the leadership of the co-chairs who are here tonight, Albert Hawkins and Richard Frazier, the CIP PAC met at the request of the board from January through March of 2012 to complete a preliminary, high-level review of the following information. Conditions of schools and other district facilities, facility equity, strategic priorities, current and projected growth, school overcrowding, underutilization, new or expanded academic program offerings, student transportation, technology, health and safety, resource conservation, environmental protection, community and regional plans, future bond programs, and other areas that may be directed by the superintendent. The CIP PAC focused on five areas: comprehensive review of facility conditions, functional equity, educational adequacy, Americans with Disabilities Act, and the Texas Accessibility Standards, AISD information services, police security, transportation requirements, and capital improvement addressing growth and demographic shifts. After discussing and analyzing this information, the CIP PAC considered the following questions in development of its recommendation to the superintendent. Does the district have a major capital improvement need that is, or are, unfunded? Is it urgent to address these needs in the short term? Does the amount of funding needed require long-term financing? Is there sufficient capacity to incur additional long-term debt? Do economic and community indicators seem favorable for a bond election? Now during the discussion of these guiding questions, the CIP PAC identified a number of collateral issues for consideration by a committee, by the Committee of Citizens who agree to support the work and work toward the passage of a bond program. Members noted other key points, such as the importance of taking advantage of current low-interest rates, of using capital investment rather than maintenance and operation funds to address capital needs, and the consequences of delays in addressing pressing facility needs. The committee voted unanimously that the district have, that voted unanimously that the district did have capital, major capital improvement needs that should be addressed, and that these needs would best be funded through a bond program. The committee's recommendation to the superintendent, which I am presenting to you this evening, is that the board approve the creation of the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee to begin the process of first, developing a scope of work for a future bond program, and then to allow the committee to work through its own charge. Mr. President, trustees of the board, the recommendation is before you tonight for the creation of a Citizens Bond Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Karstarfen. Let's open up for a motion, comments, or questions. Ms. Snyder.
I have some questions regarding this issue. My sequence of recollection on this is that we had the presentation a couple of weeks ago. There were some collateral issues that were going to be discussed, and I saw in the weekly update that was provided that it was discussed, but that's all I saw. I saw that it was discussed. I didn't see any kind of recognition of what was done, any kind of agreement on where things stood. I did see that there is unanimous agreement on going forward. And I'm not really sure what we're approving or when it's going to come to the voters. And if I understood you correctly, the committee will develop its own charge, which is what I thought I heard, but I could be wrong. So if I could get some clarification, I'd certainly appreciate it.
So the, Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Schneider, I'm, there are a few questions that I think understand. The other ones, I'm not sure I was following. But the first one about the recommendation is that we are following the board-approved Facility Master Plan Framework Design, which also included an approved timeline, which this board has seen multiple times since May of 2011 regarding the steps that you expected us to take before we were to consider, before the board would consider the creation of the CBAC, that's it, CBAC. We had this discussion in the fall. It was during that discussion that the board created this ad hoc committee to consider the things I just outlined, so that a group of community members along with staff would bring to the superintendent a recommendation before you would consider bringing forward the CIP PAC for any work. There is a charge for the CIP PAC, which is something that the board has used. I've never used it before. We haven't brought the CIP PAC together since I've been the superintendent, but I know this board has before. The issue that they would need to work on that would be their work with the board to, you know, kind of help sort out, is the scope of work. I mean, that's, that was what I meant in my comments. So, so it is, we have followed the board-approved process at every step of the way, and tonight's action, what you are doing tonight, would be to approve the new, as a step in the new structure that the board created, that this ad hoc committee that recommended to the superintendent unanimously, that you bring forward the creation, you take the action tonight that allows me to start the process of helping you create CIP PAC. I mean, CBAC.
CBAC.
CBAC, God, CBAC, thank you. So many acronyms. But that is what we're doing tonight. And that process hasn't changed at all since we approved the timeline in May, on May 23rd. So, so what you're doing tonight is taking an action that will bring together your Citizens Bond Advisory Committee.
Dr. Karstarfen, when would the election of this bond be? I mean, are we talking about having a committee for a year, year and a half, two years? What's the timeline?
Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Schneider, according to your timeline that was approved on May 23rd, 2011, the last line in that timeline mentions the possibility of a bond election, and it says, "Date to be determined," or "Date may change." Basically, there's a footnote that says that. So what I would anticipate is that, that as we know, we have all seen the multiple, multiple calendars that the facilities office has put together to show the various points and times when we could consider a bond. As a matter of fact, I think Mr. Torres highlighted some of those in our last discussion. And the bottom line is that I think basically the earliest, I think it's more of a early, and then yes, it could be more than a year. The earliest, I think the board or anyone had talked about for potential consideration was May 2013, but I would anticipate that once CIP PAC, sorry, CBAC was brought together, they would look at the scope of work and then, and then determine whether or not that is the best approach for, that's the best timeline for consideration. But unless they start the work, I don't think we would know. But I think that your comment is pretty fair. They could work for longer than normal. I think it's a very difficult time in Texas. I think it's very difficult under the upcoming legislative session and planning all these things appropriately. Y'all are talking about a potential tax ratification election, so all those things kind of have to come together. And, and those are things that they would need to work through to give you a good recommendation on how to move forward.
Okay, by scope of work, do you mean the list that was in the presentation that was given two weeks ago, or whatever the date is on that particular presentation?
Well, the scope of work for CIP PAC is partial, and I think some of that indeed would be considered by CBAC, but I would also expect that there would be other things they would consider after they got into the work a little deeper and had a sense of, a better sense of, and I don't know, again, because we don't have an advisory committee, I don't know the sense of the skills that the people have or how much they know about AISD. But I would anticipate that there would be, there would be areas that go beyond the CIBPAC.
And was there a list that was recommending how the membership of this committee would be established?
No, sir. Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Schneider, there is not a list to propose as the advisory committee that's something we would, we would get to as soon as, if, when the board approved us creating the CBAC.
Okay. Well, I continue to have the same concerns I did with, when the CIP PAC presentation was done, in that, you know, the membership of that committee, as I ask, I mean, when I looked at it, I didn't see many people from South Austin. And you did address that in a weekly update. My recollection was you had identified four people out of a committee of 30 that were from South Austin, and two of those four were staff members. And if we're using their work as a, as I put it then, a seed for the work of this committee, that would be an issue of concern to me. And, you know, I've got a real issue with an open-ended committee here. I mean, we don't have a charge, we don't have a target date for them completing their work. And, you know, this whole issue of, do we go out for a bond? Do we go out for a TRE? How much the amount is going to be? What the sequencing is going to be? Especially in a time when there's still a lot of economic need in this community is something I think we need to have a little bit more conversation about before we move forward. So, I mean, to me, it sort of makes sense to start a committee. I mean, just the, you know, the roofworks and the HVAC work and all the other things we need to do just to take care of our existing facilities. But with regard to either new facilities or some of the other collateral issues that were brought up, I think there needs to be a little bit more discussion before we proceed
Other thoughts, comments, questions about this item? Ms. Lavoy.
Thank you. I have great confidence in the chairs of this committee and I would, the, some of the people, I believe, who will be involved with this committee. But I'm, I'm thinking that maybe the board ought to be the decision-maker in thinking about how we sequence a TRE and a bond election. It's, it's a very important decision. It's, it has tremendous ramifications about success or failure when we go out for an election. And so with all due respect to potential members of the committee, and I have a great deal of respect for the, for potential members, I think maybe this is something that we ought to schedule some talk time for as a board and think about. I'd hate to see us relinquish that decision to the committee because I really do think it's board work, and it's so complicated because there are so many factors involved. So I realize that the charge is a work in progress and we're not quite there yet, but I would just suggest that we hold that decision-making for the board, because I'd hate for the committee to go to a lot of work and a lot of trouble and present a recommendation, and then we, as a board, would need to consider it all over again anyway. So that's my strong recommendation. Thank you.
Other, Ms. Moya.
Thank you. I understand that the, that the role of this committee is only to put together the list of, of potential projects that would be undertaken in a potential bond. It has nothing to do with a potential TRE at all. The decision for a TRE and the sequencing of it would come only from the board and not from the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. The, so I don't, I think it's very important for us to The, so I don't, I think it's very important for us to keep the two issues separate. They are not, they are not commingled, and, and there is no way that the board will be relinquishing any of its responsibility as far as, as calling for a TRE in the future or scheduling a bond. And I do know that on the several occasions that we have discussed the TRE and the conversations about a bond, we've been very diligent in trying to figure out the timing of both of those, and we have not gotten anywhere close to making a decision on that. So I don't, I don't feel like putting together a Citizens Bond Advisory Committee and having them do the research and putting together a list of potential projects to address the needs of the district is by any way a waste of anyone's time. We've got too many facilities and too many issues that, that need to be addressed, whether it be roofs and plumbing, and whether it be, whether it be athletic facilities on campuses, whether it be, you know, any type of modifications to deal with growth. So, so there's more going on here than just the possibility of new facilities or anything like that, and I'm not even sure that, where that would fall into the scheme of things. So anyway, I just want to, just want to say that the two issues, a TRE and a bond, are separate issues. They are not commingled in the charge of the CBAC, and would not be commingled because they're separate issues.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Guzman?
And actually, Mr. President, I'm going to, I'm going to refer you explaining this process further, because you explained it to me once, and, and it was that we, and we made decisions about how to proceed, and, and in terms of giving the superintendent guidance of how to proceed. And I think we're proceeding in, in the way we, we said, we, we said we were. But you gave a pretty good explanation of, and you said something about that it was preliminary, and you wanted the superintendent to kind of own some of these. And if you would reiterate that, I think...
Just one person's opinion. I mean, I think we heard from the CIPAC last time we met with them, and they recommended that we, the district was ready for a bond. The needs were great enough, the demand was there, and that we ought to move to the next step, and that that was really the decision. My impression was the creation of the CBAC would basically make that process move into the second phase, which was really going in greater depth, figuring out what our needs are, figuring out what the demand is, and really kind of on multiple levels, which is going to take time, find out what, you know, kind of reevaluate the critical needs and all the things that were out there, because I think there was an initial presentation from the staff and others, but it wasn't, for lack of a better term, reviewed in great detail or audited by the CIPAC. It was really an initial assessment. Second was looking at the growth and what the demographic data tells us, and making sure that we are able to accommodate the growth of the district in the right way from a facility perspective. But third, which was, I think, with the challenge, is how does all of this fit in with the academic and strategic direction of the district and our resource constraints? And so what we're putting together fits. Some, we go out and take a bond, and then you put all that into an umbrella, and there's a demand that says, how much can, do we think our taxpayers can afford? And then we, as a board, have to take a lot of information about deciding when. This is a little bit fuzzy, because we're not clear yet on exactly when we're going to go out, but we need a committee to go gather some information to get us farther down the path. I think what the CIPAC was trying to do was basically saying, yes, you need to start the process. We did an initial review at a high-level scrutiny to feel comfortable to recommend to the administration that it's time to move forward into the next step. I think what the recommendation from the superintendent is, let's start creating a committee that will, that'll begin the second-step process. I think the question is to me that are the answers, is this going to be the board's committee or the superintendent's committee? Because I think ultimately, we've in the past gone back and forth about who actually owns this committee, but I think somewhat the superintendent, we've, we've moved a little bit in a different direction, which is the superintendent needs to own more of these things, because the recommendations need to be coming from, in this case, her and the administration for which the board approves, versus sort of having the administration here, a citizens group here, and the board trying to decide between them. But I think what, what the recommendation from the superintendent, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is, is the idea is to start the process. We know that we don't have a definitive date for which we're going to go for election, so it's a little bit fuzzier than in the past when we didn't have to go out for tax ratification elections, there weren't as many competing entities going out for tax elections, and we were able to set a timeline that we knew somewhere in the next 12 to 18 months, we were going for a bond election. I don't think we can be as precise about that at this point in time, but that there are immediate needs that we need to look at. And I think what we heard, I hope this is right from the CIPAC, was there was a list of $300 and plus million of sort of critical, essential needs, but that wasn't reviewed in great detail. And I think to Mr. Schneider's point, you know, north, south, the balance, looking at all that stuff wasn't done. That's what this committee would, would get at a higher level of detail. The CIPAC met to basically make sure that we, in fact, did need to go to this step. So, I'm going to look, turn to the superintendent and say that I think we, would that be a fair representation of what's your understanding of what we want this committee to do? But we don't yet have a precise definitive date for which we would go for a bond election, and that's going to be the discretion of the board. And some of that may be fed by the information we'll actually get by the CBAC of what is the level of demand, what do we think the needs are, how does that align with the timing of the strategic direction of the district? And then the board's got to factor that in with everything else that's going on in our community, not just Austin ISD stuff, but we know there's other jurisdictions that are also looking to have to go to the taxpayers because of the pressure that's on local jurisdictions because of the state and federal budget cuts. So, I think I'm giving you a long-winded answer to say, this is really just the next step in the process, but at this point is not yet a commitment to a specific date or a specific level of package for a bond, but we need some group to start that process, and we know the needs there. And I think the recommendation from the superintendent is it's better to start now than just to wait, because the timing could come up in the future where we think it's the time to go, and if we're not prepared, we won't be able to go. Dr. Christofin, is that a reasonably fair?
Yes.
Description? Okay. Ms. Bradley?
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion.
Please.
I move that we approve the creation of Citizens, Citizens Bond Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Moya. Discussion. Ms. Schneider?
Well, again, you know, I, I think there needs to be some clearer understanding of when we're going to hear something back on this and when we're going to go forward with it. I mean, I nearly think that it would be a good idea for the board to determine some kind of maximum tax load that we're willing to put on the community before we tell them a size of something to look at. I mean, they, you know, one way they could do it is maybe prioritize things and based on, you know, come back with some small bond, like the Health and Safety Bond was in '02 or '04, or whatever that was, then a larger bond to address things. But Ms. Moya is correct that there is no direct link between a TRE and this bond election, but there is a link. I mean, you know, you and I both pay taxes. You and I are both only willing to pay so much money. And, you know, this is an option where we can say, this is how much money we're going to pay. So, you know, I really think we need to have some kind of discussion about that before somebody gets too far down the road.
Well, I'm going to take a shot at this. I think, Ms. Schneider, you're right. Before we decide on what the bond program would be, we'll have to, this consideration's problem is, I think, hopefully I'm not doing a misrepresentation, what the city's done is, they've gone out and had a committee that's come up with a billion dollars of plus of needs, and then the city's got to figure out within that, what can they afford, what's the right priority, how much, what's the, what's the public capacity to approve, you know, what issues in there are controversial that maybe would, even if it's within their level of which voters are willing to support, they still may not support that particular program, but they had to go get some level of demand first. So I think before we went to the public for a bond program and approved it, we'd have to factor all those things you said. The question is, do we have to know that before we decide to get started? Because I don't think we, until we actually have all of the information, the demand side of it, it's hard to figure out what the program side would be.
And, Mr. Williams, I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, stop dead in the tracks and do this first, but I am saying, we need to get that scheduled and an active part of our conversation before somebody spends a lot of time and, you know, we turn around and say, oh, sorry, we only want to do a $40 million bond, or a $100 million bond, or whatever the number is. You know, just, you know, have some kind of timeframe to do, do things in.
Because we're in Texas, and we do two steps. So, I'm going to suggest, we had two-step, one was the CIPAC to recommend we do this, second maybe creating this, and then within this, there may be two steps. There's a creation, and then we need to probably look at the detail of sort of the milestones, almost this calendar that we approved in the facility plan back on May 23rd. Now, what's the calendar for this, including the check-in points that we maybe aren't deciding, but maybe some point six months out? What do we expect, what level of information do we expect to get gathered, including the process by which we're going to appoint committee members, who the, how we're going to develop the charter and all that stuff, so that we can kind of get to a certain point that we can do a check-in? We know it's going to take us 12 months to 18 months before we're even ready. So, if the climate was right in May of 13 or November 13, we need to get started now to be prepared. It may be that the timing is not right then, but I think the idea is important to start now, and I think maybe it's scheduling some interim check-in in sort of a near calendar. So you got it, Ms. Wister?
Okay. So I think it's a good idea to kind of figure out, because I think, and I support the motion too, because I think it's time, we need to move forward and then be ready when the time is right. Other conversation? Okay, all in favor of that motion? Please raise your right hand. Opposed, up past and answers please. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Christofin. Okay, thank you to our CIPAC members who are in the audience this evening for all your work, and feel free to encourage your fellow participants to join in the fun as we continue on the next step of this process. Okay, board members, we are, that is the end of our items. It is 8:49, I get 8:50. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.